All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order our May 3, 2022 Regular Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First order of business is our Student Council report. Megan Spencer.
There is so much happening at the high school. On April 22, we had our first annual Battle the Bands. It was a huge success, and we had four bands competing for the title, and the winning band was Troll With. We look forward to having this event for many years to come. Our student performers also shown in Broadway in concert, which took place on the 26th, and there were many amazing performers onstage. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and at the high school, students are writing kind messages to all staff members of the school, and they will be receiving their notes on Friday. The Class of 2023 is running Wheels, Meals, and Deals, taking place on May 14. There will be a volleyball tournament hosted by Brianna Kulikin and her cast project for the IB diploma. It is on Wednesday, June 1, which will be raising money for Ukrainian refugees. The SHS Fashion Program will be hosting its annual fashion show in June as well. From the Counseling Center, last month counselors visited spring wellness classes to deliver career lessons and interest surveys to sophomores. Counselors has also begun meeting with students in small groups to engage in conversations on topics ranging from life after high school to mental health awareness and anxiety management. Counselors and their mental health team partners also received wrapping up their first cycle of lessons on the DBT Steps A, which offers students social emotional skills training through wellness classes. And now that students have made their college enrollment deposits, counselors will be conducting their annual senior survey. Completing the survey is essential for students as it ensures final transcripts are delivered to the correct college or university. On May 13, the Harlem Wizard game to benefit the Somers Education Foundation will -- is on the 13th. There will be two games, one game starting at 5:00 and another starting at 7:00. The Senior Trip to Six Flags New England is on May 13. IB and AP exams will be taking place between April 28 and May 20. The Choral and Orchestra Spring Concerts on May 18, and the Student Recognition Ceremony is on May 25. The SHS Science Research Symposium is this weekend in June, the first weekend in June, and is an annual fair hosted by Somers High School for the past 25 years, which current students in the program highlight either research they have conducted or if they're sophomores without mentors, their proposed research plans. May 23 to 26 is Spring Spirit Week, which has dress up days that are Western Wednesday, Somers gear, Dress Like a Teacher, and Adam Sandler Day, which, as it sounds, you dress up like Adam Sandler. The week closes with Field Day. Spring season is winding down with playoffs beginning at the end of next week, and the Track and Fields Lions Club Invitational is this Friday and Saturday. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. Next up, we have a time for public comment. Raise your hand if there's anybody that has public comment. This is session specifically for comments on agenda items. Okay, so then we're moving on to our public hearing on the 2022-23 budget. Is there any comments at this time? Yes, are there any -- the public is welcome at this time to make comments on the 2022-23 budget. Are there any comments at this time? Okay, so seeing none, we move on to special recognition. So tenure recognition.
Thank you, Heidi. So tonight, we're here to recognize our teammates who have gotten to a spot in their career in Somers where they are recognized for tenure this evening. It's been three years since we've actually done this in person. So everybody is very, very excited. So thank you so much to those individuals coming out this evening and the family members that I'm seeing here tonight. So it's hard to believe we haven't done this since 2019 in person, and it's not the same when you're doing this on Zoom. So I don't know how our teachers did this on Zoom. We couldn't even pull off a meeting. And so the reality is, is that to get here is a great tribute to you, to your commitment to our children in Somers, to your dedication to being educational professional. And what I would say is, at least in my career, probably one of the most challenging times as an educator. I also did find it some of the most rewarding and enriching time as well, too, because I had the opportunity to go ahead and get closer to individuals in my life in the education area more than I ever thought I would before. And so I know that you made a difference, not just in your classrooms, but in your schools and your community here. So I want to thank you on the behalf of the Somer School District and all of the families here. It has been a very, very trying number of years we've gone through. And to get your tenure through this piece, you certainly have that stick-to-itiveness that we always talk to with our children, to stay with it, keep moving forward. So what we're going to do this evening is we'll start with our Primrose campus, and we'll have Katie Winter at Primrose identify the individuals on her list there and speak through, and then we'll move to the intermediate school, then the middle school, and we'll go ahead and close with the high school. At the end of that, if it's all right, I would just ask, we'll just take a timeout from the board meeting and give folks just a moment to send their -- I'll give you the thanks and appreciation for what you've done. We'll give a couple of photo ops and those kinds of things like that, and then we'll get back to the regular business meeting. So we'll go ahead and start with Katie. So thank you, Katie.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Allison Collins, you can come forward. Allison Collins has been a kindergarten teacher for the Somer Central School District since September 2018. Since that time, Allison has demonstrated strong knowledge of content, flexibility, advocacy for students, and true collaboration. Mrs. Collins is a child-centered educator who prides herself on discovering how each child learns best. With her background in special education, she is a consummate problem solver. She readily collaborates with the whole child success team to ensure that all students' needs are being met. Allison is always planning for and executing lessons with the individual learner in mind. Allison has been active at Primrose, an enthusiastic member of the Primrose Inclusive Schools Committee, a member of our Social Studies Committee for many years. Allison recently represented the district in the revision of the Social Studies ELA curriculum through BOSI's. Additionally, she has offered Tusker workshops and taught our after-school reading lab to ensure that students continue to thrive. And you can always find Allison volunteering her time, whether it's Holiday Happiness or the Harlem Wizards. Thank you, Allison, and congratulations. Next, we have Juliana Hattie George, our first grade teacher. Juliana has been serving the Somer Central School District as a first grade teacher since September 2019. With a background in special education, Ms. Hattie George brings a unique and knowledgeable perspective when taking on the role of general education teacher in an integrated co-taught classroom. A natural collaborator, she partners easily with her special education counterpart. Utilizing research-based collaborative teaching models, Ms. Hattie George constantly examines how to engage students on an individual and personal level. An outside-the-box thinker, Ms. Hattie George and her teammate welcomed the collaboration of support staff members to revise lessons and reimagine many elements of the co-taught classroom to better meet the needs of all learners. Living the philosophy of whole-child learning, she has been a driving force behind the zones of regulation at Primrose. Additionally, she was an early adopter of digital education to harness the power of collaboration among students and professionals alike. She was a part of the committee that helped us choose the Seesaw platform, and she's been a Seesaw pioneer. With all this work, her natural collaboration led her to lead our technology committee. Based on her solid performance, we are pleased to recommend Juliana Hattie George for tenure as an elementary teacher. And I'm looking for Lauren McGuire, but I don't see her. Lauren McGuire is a Tusker through and through, living, working, and parenting three high schoolers in the Somer Central School District. Since joining the Primrose staff as a teaching assistant, she has been an asset to all the classes in which she works. As a member of the kindergarten team, she welcomes new students to Primrose annually. Quick to smile, the students feel her warmth and kindness as soon as they meet her. Families know their children have an advocate in this caring adult. Whether supervising students at play or working with small groups during literacy, Mrs. McGuire connects with our youngest learners and makes life at Primrose fun and engaging. Congratulations to Lauren. Here we go. Let's see. Allison, this is for you. And Juliana. Congratulations.
Good evening.
Come on up.
We are proud to recommend Eileen Cass for tenure as an elementary special education teacher. Ms. Cass came to us in 2019 where she was providing service for students both here at SMS and at SIS. At 20 -- in 2020, she came just to SIS, and she's been working with third graders in our integrated co-teach in our special class setting. Ms. Cass has a talent for identifying students' needs as learners and forming positive relationships with students and families. Her students absolutely adore her and are smiling all day long. In her classroom, it's evident how she connects with students and builds trusting relationships, and she takes the initiative to try new strategies, integrate technology, and work side by side with her colleagues. She's an integral member of our third grade team. She is an asset to SIS, and congratulations.
Good evening, and I am very pleased to recognize Ms. Lori Corino this evening. Lori began her career in Somer schools in 2013, where she supported various classrooms and various teachers and students in Primrose Elementary School, first as a substitute and teacher aide. She supported our youngest learners and our special education settings, and it became very clear early on from her gentle nature, her patience, her flexibility, that we were very lucky to have her as part of our district. In 2016, we were very excited to welcome Lori as part of the staff at SIS. She quickly became part of our school family and also became our resident chicken expert. She's the person to turn to if you need those farm-fresh eggs. And Lori has mainly supported our fourth and fifth grade teams, working with many of our teachers and students across different settings. And Lori takes the time to partner with the teachers to really learn about their styles, approaches, and she combines that with her own beliefs and her own skill set to best support the students. She's a team player, and she's always willing to lend a helping hand in any space in the school, from arrival and dismissal routines to helping to supervise children to offering a helping hand outside of her classroom. She brings that sense of calm and a sense of warmth to our school and really looks out for everyone's well-being. Can't ask for more than that. And that's why it is with great pleasure that I recognize and recommend Ms. Lori Corino for tenure this evening.
And we have one other teaching assistant to recognize tonight, Ann Cooper Schmidt, who couldn't be with us. But I am proud to recommend her for tenure for her second time here in Somers. She began her career in Somers working with students at Primrose for 11 years. Then she left the state, then returned to Somers where her kids went to school, and came back to work for us four years ago. One year at Primrose with our youngest students and the past three years at SIS in our integrated co-teach classrooms. Ann is skilled at assisting students with a variety of strategies to support their academic and social and emotional needs. At SIS, Mrs. Cooper Schmidt has supported both our in-person learning as well as last year being an integral member of our e-learning team. When speaking with Ann's students recently, they described her to me as passionate, caring, kind, helpful, kid-friendly, funny, nice, calm, and generous. We are certainly lucky to have Mrs. Cooper Schmidt at SIS supporting our Somer students, and we're proud to recommend her for tenure tonight.
It's hard to believe we're here, huh? Yeah. 2017, AP?
Yeah, earlier.
Earlier.
Yeah.
COVID, yeah, yeah. So Liz Turner here is our principal at SIS, and so she started as our assistant principal over at that campus. And then she started as principal 1920, COVID year was the first year, so.
1920?
Just kind of hold back for a second. One of the things that, as an administrator in our school district, so over the years, we have identified our kind of traits that we will hold ourselves accountable to as administrative team. And so basically, four of those guiding principals have come down to this idea about honesty, integrity, respect, and trust. And so each administrator who becomes part of the Somer School District receives a challenge coin. Folks are familiar with the challenge coin. Basically puts the -- it's one of these. So it puts our crest on the one side, and it has our principals on the other side, guiding principals. And so when I think about this, and I grabbed this this morning, as I always do, and I was like, oh, that's right, we got Liz tonight. And I grabbed it a little bit harder. I thought, if anybody could represent in person what this coin represents, it's Liz. When I think about the idea about honesty, I always know that Liz, as a thinking partner, will talk to me and say, look, Ray, I think we can maybe do this a little bit better. I think let's talk about, let's look at this approach, look at that. So from day one that I've had that gift of having a colleague who would be honest with me and honest to the traits that we've held as a district. She'll also tell me to make sure it's real cream and not fake cream. So it's all right, we'll get it, we'll not make that mistake again. And so then the idea about integrity. The reality is, is what Liz says is what Liz does. There's no mix in between there. What you and Linda and the teaching team and the supports team accomplished at that high school is exactly what you said you would do, and you did it, and you did it at an unbelievable level, so successfully. So what you say absolutely is what you do. Respect. As an elementary principal myself, elementary teacher, you have my utmost respect as a primary teacher, as an elementary principal. I've worked in those experiences. Wow, it's done with just the utmost accomplishment and the utmost respect for our adults and our children and our families constantly. You always bring it down to a very personal level. You're leaning in on those conversations with everybody. The idea about being respectful, it doesn't mean you always agree. I know that. I always feel good when you don't agree with me. I'm like, how did she do that? She told me that's not good, but I feel really good about it, so. Really gifted, and so elementary person, so that's great. And then trust, I will close with trust. We can't get very far without trust. Our team collectively really can't get far. What collectively we achieved over these years with trust within our group, within our teacher team, within our support staff, within our community, we would not have been able to do what we were able to do without that level of trust. I know that you will always and have always acted in there. And I would say that one thing to you. I know you always have my back, and I know you always have the back of these children, these families. So thank you very much, Liz. Congrats. I don't think I have a certificate. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite Janine Wiggins and Laura Pandolus up to the --
So Janine Wiggins, it's my pleasure to recommend you for tenure this evening. Janine's been an essential part of our teaching assistant team here at SMS. And we were joking at the beginning of the meeting, it feels like she's always been at SMS. She's been a monitor and a sub, and it's hard to believe that this is the first time that we're up here having this conversation, and it's so well-deserved. Janine works in our Skip classroom and goes above and beyond to support not only the students she works with one-on-one, but all the students in the classroom. And anybody who's been in that classroom knows that that is a fantastic environment. That's a fantastic team, and it's a team of adults that come together to meet the various needs of students. And Janine is an essential part of that group. In her role, she supports her students in progress toward their goals, both academically and socially emotionally. She's a fantastic role model, encouraging the development of social skills and interactions with peers and adults. She's a supportive colleague who works well with the teachers and support staff, not only in Skip, to ensure that students in the program are cared for, but that they excel. Over the last two years, she's really gone above and beyond as learning has gone virtually, has gone virtual to keep the relationship going with students, to jump in where she's needed. And in times when we've been short-staffed and not had all the support that really we've needed in that classroom, Janine jumps in and says, I got it, Jeff, no problem, we'll make it work. And she always does so with a smile. And you see her interactions with her colleagues, you see her interactions with students, and there's a pleasantness and a respectfulness that is just -- it's heartwarming, the way that she works here at the building. So Janine is a tremendous asset to our school and community, and it's my pleasure to welcome her, recommend her for tenure. It's also with great pleasure that I recommend Laura Pandolus for tenure this evening. Laura started here as a LEVER placement, and in her time, we've had her teach pretty much every math we could. Math 7, Math 8, algebra, geometry, accelerated, regular, you name it, Laura's taught it. And she's had such a positive impact on our school. Like I said, she's taught multiple grades, she's been co-teacher, and she's been very active in the implementation of our IB Middle Gears program. She has, she's really an early adopter, one of the first to implement NYPD in her classroom. And she proved to be a risk taker. I don't know if you remember this, but in one of her observations, she said, Jeff, I know we're going full NYPD. I want that to be one of my observations. And this was early on, and like always, she knocked it out of the park. She's a current member of our NYPD Professional Learning Team. In this role, she reviews all aspects of our implementation, instruction, assessment, policy writing, and staff development. And she's embraced this work and become a valuable member of this decision-making team. Laura understands how best to interact and teach middle school students, even in May and June. Her caring nature, sense of humor, they allow her to make strong connections with students while maintaining that rigorous classroom environment. She's constantly out in the hallway, greeting students in the morning, saying goodbye at the end of the day, and wishing them a happy birthday, actually, on their birthday. She chaperones trips, attends school functions, and shows students that she cares for them, not only inside the classroom, but out. She's been a great addition to our math department in our school, and I congratulate you on receiving tenure this evening.
Good evening, and congratulations to all of our tenure recipients. I am proud to be speaking tonight about eight individuals at the high school who will be receiving tenure tonight. So I won't have you all come up at once. I'm going to first call up Kristi Castaldo. Over the past four years, Kristi has certainly made a name for herself as a member of our Related Services team, supporting our special education students in the area of speech and language. She joined us right when the district was in the midst of its life initiative, and Kristi hit the ground running. We shifted our model from a pull-out to a push-in, and Kristi embraced that model and worked tirelessly in her classes, working directly with the teachers to support all of her students, but particularly those who had speech and language on their IEPs. She is a true professional and a great practitioner. Through her work, she has formed collaborative relationships with so many of the teachers in the classrooms that she supports. In addition to her role as a speech-language pathologist, Kristi has also served as an advisor for our senior class. She kicks me every day for having said yes to that. And for the past four years, has worked tirelessly with those groups, with that group of students, especially trying to make their senior year be special and fun during the COVID crisis that we've been living through. We're excited to be recommending Kristi for tenure tonight. Congratulations. Might not be in the right order. Next, the next person I'd like to call up has had a long connection to Somer, so it's not her first time up here. So I'd like to call up Christine Drysdale. So Christine has worn many hats in her time in the Somer Central School District. First as a middle school English teacher, Christine was then transferred to the high school where she thrived in this new setting and very quickly saw the need to support our students' writing across the curriculum. As such, she proposed and helped establish our Writing Center to help support students in all forms of writing. In her time in the Writing Center, Christine worked closely with our then library media specialist and developed a love and passion for that role. She went back to school and shortly after receiving her certification as a library media specialist, moved into that role. Somehow had a way of making that person retire, and she assumed that role. Great job. In her time as LMS at the high school, Christine has really worked to revitalize the library to become a hub of student learning. She has revamped the physical space to make it more suitable for collaborative work and has thoroughly gone through the entire collection of books to weed out outdated materials. In her time as LMS, Christine has truly created a space where teachers and students alike can come for quiet study, to access any number of resources to support teaching and learning, and work together in a space that supports learning and collaboration. During the 1920 school year, when the high school completely revamped its schedule and implemented a community lunch, who would have ever thought having the entire school free at once would work? Christine worked tirelessly to make that work for all of our students and staff. She embraced the change and found ways to continue to make the library a welcoming and inviting space for all. During the pandemic, when we switched again to our hybrid model of instruction, Christine again demonstrated great flexibility and problem solving as she re-engineered so many of the practices in the library to support students who were remote and/or couldn't access the physical space. Throughout her probationary period, Christine has gone above and beyond to grow our library into a thriving space where students and staff can learn and work. She has shown incredible vision for what a library should be, the central hub of a high school, and has made great strides towards implementing that vision. Congratulations, Christine. Next, I'd like to call up Mike -- sorry, Alex Frye. As a member of a very strong earth science team and also co-teaching in our integrated co-teaching setting along with our special education staff, Alex works tirelessly to help all learners find success by providing them the support that they need. help all learners find success by providing them the support that they need. Last year, as SHS moved to the hybrid model of teaching, and many teachers spoke of the challenges of engaging students when half of them were in-person and the other half were at home on Zoom, Alex's classes remained vibrant and engaging environments, where students eagerly participated in their learning, whether they were in-person or on-camera. This speaks to the sense of community Alex creates within his class, and the strength of those relationships that tested even the most challenging of situations. Alex's enthusiasm for his subject matter, his very effective, I'm going to do a quick admission here, I should have done a larger font, Jeff. If anyone wants to pass me their reading glasses, if you've got readers, I will take them. And I lost track of where I was going. His effective teaching strategies, I'm going to do what my dad used to do, and his belief in his students, all combined to make him an excellent teacher. In the short period that Alex has been with us, he has become a valued member of our Science Department and an integral member of our entire staff. He cares deeply about his students and utilizes all resources at his disposal to help support them in their learning. He holds firm to the conviction that all students can succeed, and he collaborates with his colleagues to ensure that they do. Congratulations, Alex. I'll take them. Thanks, Claire. All right, we can all judge. Oh, that might not work. Yes, it does. All right. Embarrassing. Our next tenure recipient unfortunately could not be with us today, but I am still going to talk about Kevin Lockwood. Kevin has outstanding relationships with his colleagues and is a well-respected member of our faculty and of our Social Studies Department. He truly is a team player, humbling himself to learn from his peers with more experience, but confident enough to assert his own ideas and insights. Kevin connects with his students in ways that positively impact their learning. He fosters a community of learners in his classroom in which individual differences are respected. His classroom environment feels safe and supportive, where students are valued for their thoughts and contributions. Kevin pushes his students to take risks and creates the conditions where they can do so safely, knowing full well that they will be supported. Outside the classroom, Kevin has taken on the role of advising our mock trial club and has done a terrific job with those students. He cares deeply about his students and knows how to reach even the most challenging individual. He demonstrates an unwavering belief in his students' ability to succeed and goes the distance to help support them. Congratulations, Kevin. I'm glad we all went in the same order. All right, next, I'd like to call up Danielle Pezzuto. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Danielle Pezzuto for tenure as a science teacher at Somers High School. Certified in both chemistry and biology, Danielle joined us with 11 years of experience at both Rye High School and Putnam Valley High School. Danielle is bright, thoughtful, and articulate. She helps make the course content she teaches accessible to all students. Those of us that have been through chemistry know that is not an easy task. She relates well to her students and creates a safe space for them to learn and grow. She creates a classroom atmosphere that is warm and inviting, in which students are comfortable asking questions and taking risks, knowing that they won't be judged for making mistakes. She also makes learning fun, always trying to have students engage in their learning and draw meaning from it, even when confronted with challenging and/or abstract concepts. Danielle is a valued member of her department, collaborating with her colleagues around curriculum development, as well as common formative and summative assessments. While Danielle is on the quieter side, her presence in the department is certainly strong. Outside the classroom, Danielle has served as our Assistant Varsity Cheerleading Coach, where she has helped support and grow the program over the past couple of years. She creates great connections with our student athletes as she pushes them to come out of their comfort zone. Congratulations, Danielle. Next, I'd like to call up Mia Sinaj. This should be more of a roast for Mia, but I'll stick to what I have written. As a vital part of our goal program, Mia has supported our most fragile learners over the past four years, helping them navigate the complexities of high school while finding success academically and, more importantly, in many of these cases, socially. Mia is a fierce advocate for the students with whom she works, providing the right balance between providing appropriate supports while also fostering independence. She believes strongly in her students' abilities even when they doubt themselves. She is there to pick up the pieces when they're having a rough day, but also celebrates along with them when they experience something good. She is a champion for students who sometimes doubt that adults are on their side. In the classroom, she helps our students find success despite challenges they might face, both academically and behaviorally. She is well-respected by everyone in our building and is seen by classroom teachers as an invaluable resource in the classroom for both general and special education students alike. Her humor is infectious, and she quickly makes connections with all those with whom she works. Outside the classroom, Mia has also been our class advisor for the seniors, culminating this year in her work with that senior class. She has been an incredible person to work with and has gone above and beyond to support the class of 2022, even during these challenging times that the pandemic has presented. I can't wait to ride a roller coaster with you on May 13th. Congratulations, Mia. Is this where I should tell you that, you know, we're not doing this? All right, next, Christine Spencer. Christine's connections to SHS have been extensive and long. As a graduate of the high school, a parent of four children, a member of our PTSA, a TA in our Student Life Center, formerly known as our Tech Lounge, and now as a teacher of Social Studies. She filled in for us during a time of need when one of our teachers needed to leave suddenly, and after doing a great job, moved into this probationary position the year after. Since joining us, Christine has demonstrated her outstanding ability to connect with her students, her incredibly strong pedagogy, and her rich repertoire of instructional strategies aimed at engaging students in their learning. Christine has been a team player within the Social Studies Department and has become an integral member of the department. She has taught APU US History as well as IB Psychology and has done a terrific job with both courses. They're taking their exam this week?
On Friday.
On Friday, all right. Good luck to them. Her content knowledge is strong, as is her ability to provide access for all students so that they can be successful in the most rigorous learning experiences. Outside the classroom, Christine is a class advisor for the second time. She said yes twice. Hint, hint. Kristi's shaking her head. Her first time through as class advisor culminated with her senior class finishing out their time with us during the pandemic lockdown. Christine and her co-advisor, Brenda O'Shea, went above and beyond to create a senior-year experience that honored the seniors and made their final months with us memorable, despite school being shut down. She worked tirelessly to confront any and all obstacles that arose in the end, and in the end, provided an experience for our seniors of which we can all be incredibly proud, and I know that our seniors remember, will remember forever. Christine is the consummate professional, a collaborative partner to her colleagues, and an outstanding teacher. Year after year, she receives accolades, sorry, she receives accolades from her students who talk about the warm atmosphere she creates in her classroom, as well as the way in which she makes the learning fun and interesting. She is a teacher who champions all students and supports them at every turn in the road. She has invested in their learning and helps students grow as learners and, more importantly, as individuals. Congratulations, Christine. And the next person, also couldn't be here tonight, but also it's not his first time receiving tenure, so Andrew Zanker, who joined us four years ago as a math teacher, is also certified as a special education teacher. And so while he got tenure as a math teacher, is now receiving tenure as a special education teacher. And he has grown so much in his time with us at Somers High School. In the classroom, Andrew demonstrates the versatility required to effectively teach a wide range of students. From our fully self-contained Math IX to co-taught Algebra I and Precalculus, Andrew is a highly effective educator regardless of the level of the class. He effectively differentiates his instruction and modifies his approach to ensure that all students can find success, even those for whom math does not come easily. He is a way of breaking down difficult tasks to make them accessible for struggling learners, and his supportive and warm approach builds their confidence. He believes in his students, and in turn, they come to trust him. Congratulations, Andrew. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So if it's all right, Board, we'll just take a moment to just congratulate folks in person, and we'll get back to the business meeting. So just take a quick break, Paul. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much, Board, for this evening. Again, it's been three years since we've been able to do that, and again, just the laughter and the team picture and just the conversation and everything and excitement there. So it's good to, it's just good to be back. So again, thank you, Board, for this time, every May that we give to this. It is a portion of our meeting, but hopefully you can see it as well appreciated. And folks were talking, oh, I remember, I know this is what it's supposed to be like. And they were so glad it wasn't on Zoom. So, so thank you.
Great. Very nice time. Thank you for all those introductions. All right, so moving on, back to the business. Not quite as exciting and fun. I have to acknowledge that we are in acceptance of the financial, the warrant reports, statements of revenues, treasurers' report, and budget status report. And then next on the agenda after that is the approval of the meeting minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of minutes of the meetings for April 19, 2022, and April 26, 2022, hereby approves the same. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? And then next up is the personnel consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. And that agenda included the tenures that we just recognized. Next up is the CSE and CPSE meeting recommendations. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of recommendations of the meetings as listed on the attached memo, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. And then the business consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any questions or discussion?
I would like to ask Chris to explain a little bit about those technologies.
Lease purchase?
Yeah.
Yeah, so as the district has done for many years, we finance the purchase of instructional technology devices for our students. So we finance the, over three years, and that allows us to purchase more in one year, and then we pay it off over the next three years. Those are instructional devices, tablets, Surface Go's, the New Line displays. And this year, there's an increase budgeted for the 2223 school year to also provide some much-needed infrastructure upgrades as well, to allow those devices to work properly for students and staff.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. Next up is a policy second reading and adoption. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District does hereby accept the following policy for a second reading and adoption: Number 5660, Student Gifts and Solicitations.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And I'll just note, this policy was discussed with a policy committee on March 29 of 2022, updated for some clarity. The process hasn't changed. Was there anything else from the policy committee that you wanted to share? Okay. Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. So that brings us now to public comment. And I do not believe we have any public here to comment at the moment. So if anybody comments, nope, okay. Then we're up to board member comments.
I want to acknowledge all the teachers who've persevered through the pandemic and persevered successfully, so I congratulate them on this accomplishment. So, thank you, teachers.
Yeah, I thought it was, that was fun, getting to know, you know, some of the other teachers that I don't know, my kids haven't had yet. And then also hearing some of the, I guess, the write-ups by the principals and a little bit about what each of the teachers and TAs have been doing, and the value-adding, going above and beyond, and that's always fun to hear. Yep. But that was good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. You're right. It's fun to hear about the teachers who your kids have had, right, and to sort of, you know, hear, hear. Congratulations. It's so great, you know, to be able to congratulate you with tenure, but it's also exciting to think forward about who our kids will have in the future. So it really is a fun night. I was listening and sort of writing down little blurbs of what folks were saying and thinking about all of the different ways that our teachers were helping our kids thrive in all these different dynamic and wildly different experiences of COVID. And I'm just, I'm just blown away. I mean, all of these accolades that they were collecting from student quotes, I heard, I think Ms. Belgris gave direct quotes from students. How powerful to hear student quotes and testaments of our teachers, and how great we should capture that, right? Like, I want to bottle that so that we can, you know, look at it on the days where we just need to look at that. And I really just think it's a powerful framing for what our work is here. And I also want to acknowledge that it's Teacher Appreciation Week, but I don't think there should be Teacher Appreciation Week, because I think we should appreciate our teachers all the time. But if any of our teachers are watching this, I want them to know that we appreciate all of them. And yeah, what a, just a tremendous experience. Thank you. Thank you for those of you who are here and those of you who are not.
You know, our biggest asset is our teachers, and they're the most important thing that we have in our school. And I'd like to thank our superintendent and our administrators for the job they're doing in hiring, screening, and nurturing these teachers. So thank you.
Yeah, I also like to congratulate all the people that are being recognized for tenure. But I want to add one more point that, from my experience, yesterday, we had a forum for the candidates running for the school board. There were a lot of questions that are asked. The few points that I want to point out, I think it's important for us to all know that, is the questions are surrounding our sort of a society, community thinking, okay? There are issues raised about DEI, CRT, civil education, democracy. It is a little surprising to us that questions were such, you know, direction, not a dollar cents, okay? I don't think anybody asked, you know, our budget. So from that questioning and discussion, you know, it really made me thinking, our school, you know, in response, we really need to pay attention to these things. I answered some of the questions. I also, particularly one case about civil education and the democracy, I mentioned my own son's, you know, he just graduated from Harvard. Instead of getting a five-figure salary, he's starting a nonprofit organization promoting youth, people get involved in civil democracy. And a term, very nice term called, "How do we improve through micro-democracy?" I didn't go into that detail because, you know, one minute answer to these questions. But I feel in our school, we need to bring these topics, okay? topics, okay, to the school and have them really discuss is important. As you can tell, the community, this, this society at large is, is interested. And it's important for us to improve our country, you know, our future, you know, it's in these young people understanding, you know, what their civil, you know, duty is, and what the country is moving ahead, what's our problems, how do we solve problems, you know, in general. So this might be a little, you know, bigger, diverted from tonight's, you know, agenda and so on, but it's so important, and it's something that I felt through this forum, I would like to convey to the board and to our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Chad?
Yeah, well, you know, the most important thing that we're trying to accomplish here in our public schools is, is teaching our children and preparing them for what's next, for their future, for them to find, find their success. And, and I think testament to that are the teachers that, and educators that were before us and honored tonight and, and who have earned their tenure, which is not an easy process. You know, we, we get a peek at, at how it's evaluated and, and what's required for them to earn that. And it's something they should be very proud of. And it's something as a community that we should be proud of, that we have them here at our school and, and teaching our kids, hopefully for a long time. So congratulations, certainly to everyone who's, who's earned, earned, earned the honor tonight. Yeah, the budget, May 17th, that's a big date. It's important, it's important that we don't take things for granted. It's important that we support our schools, and I, I think the budget that we've, we've put forward is, is responsible. Otherwise, we wouldn't have put it forward. But please, it's, it's really important that everybody gets out. This is democracy. This, this is how, this is how we do things in our country. So please get out and vote. And a reminder, there are for the trustees for the Board of Education, it's three spots. So please, vote for three people. And, and don't for, don't forget that. It's important. I, I thank the community members, Ife, for, for stepping up. And this is a volunteer position. And, and I think it says a lot that we have community members who are passionate about the school, that are willing to put themselves out there and, and run for this position. But please, get out and vote, May 17th. Thank you.
Two weeks. All right. Well, you stole most of what I was going to say, Chad. So, but I, I did want to also, like everybody else, congratulations to all the teachers that received tenure tonight. It's, it's not an easy task. It's, you know, all the staff that are hired don't, you know, not every teacher that's hired or teaching assistant that's hired in Somers receives tenure and, and is able to stay with us. So, you know, it's, it's a big accomplishment. And a shout out also for the administrators and also the colleagues of those who were tenured, because it's, it's a, it's a team process of, of learning what Somers wants and working together and giving constructive evaluation and helping new teachers to our district to, to grow and to meet the demands and the high standards that we hold them to. So, you know, thanks for, to everybody that's involved in that process. And, and congrats to those teachers. And yeah, and I just was going to reiterate that, the mention of the forum of what Ife had mentioned and Chad, in case anybody wasn't aware, last night, there was a forum in which some questions were asked. It's about an hour and a half long of all four candidates. So if you want an opportunity to get to know the candidates better, and you didn't see it, I believe it's going to be posted to the district website.
Yes.
And you can also watch, there's usually some information that comes out in the Somers Record. So, you know, get to know the candidates and make sure that you vote for your trustees for, for the Board of Ed for next year and to show up for the budget vote. So.
Good.
Thanks.
Thanks, Eddie. So just a couple of things. One, we mentioned about Teacher Appreciation Week. Going on now, it's like we said, it was timely that tonight, we'd spent a few moments to specifically focus in on our teachers. And so certainly, getting to this point and already looking ahead of how we can kind of make our next best effort improvement is a part we're continuing to, to be a part of. So two pieces I did want to mention. One, at the next board meeting proper in June, when we have that, that, that meeting, we'll be having a conversation about where we will identify end-of-year balance funds, which account that they were going to. We've talked about this through the year. So basically, historically, we've had the reserve accounts for the tax return chair matter, for ERS and TRS reserves. We'll find out through the election with the request of, of the district and the board to ask the establishment of another capital savings, capital reserve account for our facility needs and improvement. So at that point in time, we'll know if we've been able to establish that account. And then we'll have a, a pretty good idea of where we'll be ending at the, end of the year in fund balance, and where we want to put those dollars into reserve. Again, it's typically anywhere between 2% to 3% of the overall budget. So we talked before about where we'd be placing those dollars. And so we want to continue that conversation. We are anticipating in the next seven to 10 days, the next update, as far as the tax return chair matters, that were the large two tax return chair matters we're talking about, one of those in particular. Hopefully we'll have that information so we can make even a more informed decision when we meet in June. So we would not anticipating any additional dollars into our ERS reserve. We're, we believe we're stable there. Our TRS reserve, the same thing as well, too. We actually may be shifting some of those dollars out of there and putting into another reserve account. And that'll be a matter of how, how much do we increase that tax return chair reserve? We're roughly at 6.7 right now. And how much do we need to go up to that? And then what may we be able to start, hopefully, putting into the reserve for the, the capital improvements that we have to come. So we'll bring that proposal forward to you at the meeting in June, based upon where we end up anticipating landing. Again, as the board knows, this is typically what that June meeting is involved in, where we look at those dollars here. This one's just a little bit more timeline we need because we've, we've got to see if we do make movement on any of those reserve, those tax return chair matters. So just thought I'd bring that one up. The other part I wanted to mention too, is that we spoke about this, I think roughly this time last year, as well as in the fall. Folks may be aware of the U.S. News World Report that kind of comes out, ranks schools, it does colleges, it does all kinds of things and stuff. So we've talked about a little bit of those ratings. The reality is, is that, a couple of things. One of those, the same thing holds true as far as the Regents assessments in, in the, in that mechanism. Those results actually go back all the way to 18, 19. It's the same results they lose last year for this year's assessment, because there was no Regents given in 1920 school year. I'm not sure what they're going to do moving forward, because in the 2021 school year, there are Regents given by choice, didn't have to take, not students took, we don't even have the results back from those yet in an aggregate level. So I'm not sure where they're going to go with that the following year. But the fact that matters is that they're using the same 18, 19 results now as they did before. The board may recall that we talked about, in particular, the mathematics area. So if you look at our district in, in relationship to the scores that are reported, that they use the U.S. News World Report, are just when they're taken at the high school level. So for the, the children at the high school level, we have approximately 58% of our scores in algebra across the district last, in the 1819, were taken at the high school. The 42% that were taken in the middle school do not get included in those numbers. If you look at other districts around us, very, you'd be like, a number of 30% were maybe given in the middle school. Another district I pulled was another 12%. Another district was 25%. So as we talked before, that's a large, large number of students. And those students are typically our high, the most accelerated students in, in mathematics. Their algebra scores are at the top level and things like that. So those numbers are not included into that number. It would be the same for those other school districts. But in looking at those districts, we have a significant amount more students that are actually not including those numbers because they're at the middle school level. So I just wanted to clarify that kind of point when you look at the Regents piece. ELA, you'll see the LA scores are relatively the same across the, those districts, because the LA is not given at the middle school. It is only given at the high school. So that's where it's the kids that are registered at the high school, take it at the high school, where the Regents is different. So I want to point out that piece. The other part in here as well, too, is as we saw in the 1920, are the results that were used for IB and AP. In particular, that year, there was a choice not to take those assessments. So what we were seeing, just grabbing our IB, look, approximately one out of three students chose not to take that assessment. We did not mandate those assessments were taken. Some school districts said you, you need to take the assessment. We did not head that pathway. What we do is we use the internal assessments that exist already in IB, and that was how they demonstrated their, their evidence of learning for the course. And then they did not need to take, go ahead and take that external exam. That's the one that's reported out to the New York State Education Department, which ultimately U.S. News grabs that information. So again, that doesn't help with your performance rating. Percentage of kids who took it is kind of like there. But as far as performance, when you're having about one in three kids are not, they're not choosing to take it. So that kind of, does not bring that into the action.
Right, great.
I have a question.
I'll go ahead and link you. Sorry, no, drop you. I just saw your hand first.
All right. So just to clarify, Ray, does that mean then, if what you're saying is that the math score is not inclusive of our eighth grade students, many of whom are taking the accelerated math courses and scoring quite well on these exams, that the number that U.S. News and World Report is using to report out on is not inclusive of those high performers because they're in eighth grade? Is that what you mean to say?
Yes.
So that's important news that we should be sharing?
Yes. And obviously also Lindsay for that is, in relationship to other districts, that's, that's, that's a similar pattern there. Yet then the percentage of our children who take that, 42% in eighth grade, is, is above any of the districts that, I had random glad today, almost twice as much, about three times as much. So instead of 88% of our kids taking it to high school, we're looking at like a 58%. So it's a large number.
But you're saying that's parallel, right? Ray, is that, is that in other districts, other eighth graders also are taking?
Right.
But that our proportion is a little disproportionate from other districts when you compare?
And then this goes back to the more math, longer, again, remember Kevin spoke about this, three issues. So years ago, and say, look, we got a high number of students that are getting to algebra level here, but we see a, a ratio that decreases of students get to maybe a calculus level versus some other school districts that we spent time in working with, and Kevin in particular, the math team, lower numbers here, but actually they end up with higher numbers of kids got to the calculus level. So that was too, too quick, missing some content, and students who were coming out of it and being basically a choice deceleration, is what we're looking at. So getting kids there, and then that's the pathways we've talked about. We spent, actually, at Tusker University, family focused shortly on this, about you still get to BC calculus like you did before, but you also have a choice. The structure was built, and if you didn't take algebra, you were not going to get to that level. So underneath the math team and with Kevin's guidance there, now that is an option, where it really frankly wasn't before. So it wasn't a fault of, of folks who said, look, if I want to get to calculus level, I had to take it here. So that's a big change.
Thank you.
It's interesting, the nuances that don't show up in some of those kinds of reports, like why they wouldn't kind of look at a cohort, regard, you know, and how many students in that particular, how did the students in that particular cohort perform when they took algebra, regardless of when they took it?
Right.
And it would give you a much more comprehensive view of how our, how our students at a particular school doing, you know, in algebra.
Yes.
You know, when you're, when you're leaving out a whole segment of the population, that's...
Ife, I want, I want to take your question, too, if that's all right. And I want to come back to that. Ife, go ahead.
Okay. My question relates to, when you mentioned the IB program, I was just wondering whether we should revisit that question about how IB defines a bar for improvement. I mean, when we try to, you know, take on this program, of course, there's a qualification bar that they define. But now we're in it, we would like to understand, how do we define our own bar to improve the IB program year after year, particularly you moving from, you know, grade down and so on. So perhaps we should have a little workshop or some kind of a discussion in our board meeting to understand that.
And my hope is, Ife, when you said that, it made me think about the, the visual that pops in my head is the report that was in the fall, that looked at the three-year historical trend from International Baccalaureate. Two pieces in there. One was, remember, the teacher's prediction of where students would score, and then actually how they did score. And then over the three years, our predictions, internal and external, got closer and closer.
Yeah.
And then also, we saw a movement of students performing at a more proficient level over those three years, too. So that one is what comes to me first, but we'll definitely want to talk further about that.
The COVID sort of a disruptive thing. So we, we need to
Yes. We gotta...
Discuss this on, over this COVID and forward.
And that's where, for us, we had really, really good participation. But if one out of three students were not taking that test, and now, and in particular, a course like the IB, Sports Exercise Physiology, we have a number of students that access that course. That is a course that may be the student's only decision to go into AP or IB. And so the reality is, is with that, typically, we do require students, you go into the course, you must take the external final. That was given away. But one of the things that, and again, I like the way that we spoke about it earlier, and my colleague Kevin spoke about, where philosophically, we believe that all students, and we're practicing that all students should have access to the most rigorous curriculum. If we want that number to change, I have a very quick solution on how to do that. We remove the International Baccalaureate Program of Sports Exercise Physiology and some other courses that, that those students may not be performing at, at that level. That will get you that piece. And so there's, that's, that's what the numbers are. The performance is maybe not as high as you like, but as we spoke before, you are better off, better prepared, even if you don't get that three or higher in AP or a four higher, by going through the experience in and of itself with the appropriate supports and mechanisms than to not go through that experience. So that's a part that, again, I, I know as a community member, and as a board, say, how come the score is what's going on? Okay, that's what's going on. The reality is, we can adjust that.
But we can do a rational analysis on that.
Yes. So and I will tell you that it has been challenging to get some direct questions from the U.S. News World Report on some of the factors that they've identified. It's, it's difficult to figure out, but from the very rudimentary level that we just discussed, we have a significant more portion of students taking eighth grade that, and Regents that do not get included in the numbers, as well as you got roughly one out of three kids, for example, in IB, that, that did not take the test last year. So just philosophically, that, that is still the intent. All children equal access to the embedded honors piece and having students get after access to these courses.
And skewed data. I mean, that's some significantly skewed data.
Very, very much so. Yes.
It's going to be really hard until, until we get a couple of years past.
Right. And that's the part I don't know what they're going to do with 18, 19, because we didn't have 19, 20, 21. So it may be, when you get to the 24, 25 school year, they're finally going to use this year's Regents for it, because it's just so far in the rear.
Yeah, because even some use SAT or ACT scores, but even that is skewed now, because with colleges not requiring the testing and many kids choosing not to participate. So...
And I know, as we've talked, is how can we better provide better clarifying information to the board, the community, that we are making progress and we are stepping forward in that work. So those are the pieces that we want to go ahead and, and continue to think about. We, hopefully, we'll sneak a moment at the end of June meeting, but we certainly see our trajectory will be very visible on the chart. You remember our chart before, where we just showed here, it's like fall, winter, and spring, and like star and stuff. And then COVID hit, and you can kind of see what that is. And then we're, we're back on what we believe will be pretty close to the trajectory where we were pre-COVID. So now we've kind of gotten those numbers back, fall, winter, and spring and stuff. So I just want, you know, if anything comes forward, we'll certainly talk about it. Learning Office is always open, and they, and they are always welcome and commenting to anybody who has questions, and please reach out and call. Let's talk about that. And we'll, we'll kind of share what our understanding of it is and what our piece is. And so just want to kind of open that up.
Ray, only because you were sharing it, I'm assuming it's a point of concern by the community. I don't know, you're sharing...
Well, we've received some communications and stuff like that in, in, in my office form. Hey, what's, what's going on with those numbers? And I'd say, look, I don't want to leave it on a vacuum. The reality is, we're certainly aware of, of those numbers dropped, and we understand why. We spoke about it before, but you know, and we want to rewind back to that and say, again, we know the math pieces there, and in particular with a 1920 school year, that students didn't have to take that, and we did not put that on parent, parents or kids.
And I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if it would be helpful for the community to see rankings before pandemic ran. What, and you said it's going to climb back up to show the, the difference?
Yeah.
Through some sort of communication tab. So then they can see, oh, what Ray was talking on, May 3rd, that it's going to come back up. There it is. We're showing you the data
Yeah, that's why I'm referring to rational analysis.
Show, show us, show the community, if, if it's a point of concern, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. And, and we'll certainly, and I, and I hear what you're saying, and I, and I think that that will get there. It's just going to take a little time to do that. As again, I have no idea what it's going to do with Regents for the next few years, because we don't have any results to share out on that. So...
And I guess, and that's part of what we've talked about with some of our summer, summer work that we need to do in terms of setting goals for, for the district and as a board, is what measures are we going to, going to be looking at for our district's success? And you, you shared a lot with us in the fall last year.
Right.
Gave us a lot of data points that, you know, showed trajectories and showed where there were weaknesses that were being addressed. And, you know, you you know, you had a lot of, a lot of summative kind of information there that helps. But, you know, definitely in times as things are changing, it'll be great to be able to set those benchmarks of, you know, how, how are we showing the success of some of our schools and how are we showing progress of some of our schools? And, you know, it, the, the way we measure it based on our programs and our unique district may be, may be different than some others. But, you know, we're looking at what, what is our goals for the kids and.
Well, thank you for letting me spend a few minutes on, on that conversation and stuff. And we'll continue to have that conversation moving forward and thinking about what do we want in the interim in there. And again, I would default to the STAR assessment. It is a relatively widely used tool. Millions of children on a annual basis use that, it's computer adaptive. So it's not the only assessment, but it's, it's fairly straightforward and we can kind of demonstrate where we've historically been, what we experienced and where we were, and then how we're, how we're coming out of that. And again, it's a fall, winter, spring and things like that. And so actually we're looking at, Phil, Kevin and I have been working with the team of our, of our colleagues to look at the social emotional wellness side. And this is where I wanted to close, is we've got a, a committee that we've established. We have actually like twenty-eight or so folks on that committee to have this conversation. How can we help also look at screenings of student social emotional wellness? And so we can kind of monitor that, help provide resources and to support that. So that in, in essence feels like a monitor of the mathematics and the reading piece there too. So that is something that hopefully we can go ahead and bring forth relatively quickly at those trigger points through the year and, and share that out. So, yeah, so thank you.
But it seems like the STAR assessment, Ray, is, is looking at normative data, right? Like looking at typically developed normative data that's, that's across the U S, which is helpful for a lot of indicators. But I know that our educators have their own assessments that they're using internally that are much more thoughtful, much more rich, much more dynamic to some of us. And I think as we do set our goals, as we set our goals for our board and for the, for our community, that we should also make sure that we're looking to those, right? And we're clear on what those data points are that are unique to us and what we value, right? And I, I believe strongly, and I've said it before, that to do that well, I think we need to reach out to the community, right? I think we do need to talk to the, the families in the community who have kids in our schools, you know, and, and figure out, you know, yes, the STAR is a great tool, but it's like you said, it's one, it's one of our resources, we have many, thank goodness. So I want to just put that out there, that when we do have this conversation, let's be inclusive of the actual dynamic assessments that our educators use and use well, that are not, you know, everybody's, but they're ours, they're dynamic to us.
Yeah, so when we bring that forth during the fall, we can share just the other kind of assessments that are used in the classroom based measurements and things like that. Also, our intent is to get to a target where next spring, roughly around this time, we'll have at least a sample of our eighth grade children who will be going through the first time in the community project that is an expectation for the I B program. So again, that's coming in, talking to children, listening to what they're saying. It's basically, you, you get to help, they'll help us understand, what did you get out of the middle school? And what difference do you think you can make in your communities, be it community, classroom, your town, state, country? Well, you define community, but what can you bring to the solution? I think you heard one of our I B diploma candidates tonight that Megan tear about is, is hosting an event next week. And that's that, that's their, their personal project that they're working at the high school, kind of their cast project. So you get to go see it and we get to talk with them and hopefully kind of start opening up our schools and saying, come in, community. And it aligns back to the learner profile that we spent some time as a board in our retreat. We had a tough university class, can we talk to our community, we've talked to our faculty about it. Here's the learner profile of a graduate from the Somers School District. Here's evidence along the way, and then here's like a comedy piece in eighth grade, here's like a moment to pause and look at that. And then once we, a couple of years down the road, get to tenth grade, they'll have their personalized project, pause, look at it, come in and speak to that. So those are critically important opportunities for us to take a look at that.
And those are assessment pieces and that we'll be able to look at that other school districts don't have, you know, other school districts that aren't using the Middle Years Program don't have that. So it's not something that's comparative, we're going to be looking at our own students and, and their growth through that.
Yeah, I think, I think the important aspect of that, especially relating to things like the U S News rankings or what you might see on Zillow, you really do need to understand what the data is, what, 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 what is that really telling you? And, and I think if you look at the data and just as Dr. Blanch was explaining, that it, it is skewed, it's not, not accurate. But the important thing is that our district, it's not that we're not, I mean, the district is heavily involved in looking at how our kids are doing as they go through, making the adjustments, evaluating the math and seeing if there was something that, that, that we saw that we didn't like how the outcome was happening. They, they really revamped the whole math pathways and, and I, I hope to look and, and see some great success with that. But I have a lot of confidence that the district is looking at some really good information and, and working to ensure that we have the outcomes for our students that, that are, as a community, as a parent, that I want to see for my kids and that we all want to see for, for our kids. I think that's what's really the important takeaway from it. And I, I think for our responsibility is, I think is partly what you were saying too, Lindsay, is the communication with the community, if there are questions about this, and if there are a lot of questions, we just have to make sure that that's clear, that they understand.
I just want to, I, I don't want us to minimize people's concern about real estate values because that is a legitimate concern. And I think, since you brought, I think we should be able to communicate that with the, the community, about what the rankings mean and, and how they do get skewed. Because I think we could say it, but I think if we explain it, then there's some clarity around it, which is what I said, I think you talked about it today, but over time, sharing it in some way. And I, and I don't want us to take the stance, and that, this is my own personal opinion, taking a stance of, you know, we will sacrifice rankings and example for the sake of blank. Like why can't we try to find a balance between high performing schools and whatever our standards are? And, you know, the other things that we look for in a school district. So I don't want us to, I don't want to take the stance of either or, it's like, how do we find a balance of all the good things that we want for our community?
Yeah, and, and if I express it that way, that was certainly not by any means my intent, it's, it's, it's always an and. And so, and I think somebody spoke to, there is a reality that we do have in the nineteen twenty school year, just a, a very clear blip that we'll see from our internal assessments as well as external assessments and things. So, so that's a, that's a key part that we would be wanting to look at. And then if we think about the ability for us to help prepare our students to leave this school district with the graduation rate, the percentage of children that are attending college, then the percentage of children that go back to the college that they attended in year, in year one, those have historically been important metrics that will continue to be following and, and monitoring as well as we go forward with that work.
And those are metrics in the U S News and World Report too. Like those are actually part of the metrics that they're using as well as the graduation rate.
Graduation rate is absolutely one of them. What we are able to get through our partnership with National Clearinghouse is, okay, the kids graduate, what percentage go off to college and then what percent actually go back to that same college in two years later? It's like, okay, are we matching up? Are we doing a good job of matching those kids up? So right, the last numbers we were at is we were about ninety-one percent of kids went off to university and then almost ninety-three percent of those kids went off, went back to the same university year too. Average around countries in between roughly high fifties. And so.
Fifties for the going back the second year.
Fifties for going back the second year, yeah. So again, those are kind of pretty, pretty important parts. It's a huge investment on the part of the family of the child and everybody involved. It's like, you don't want to be having a whole bunch of kids saying, I'm not going back. So the, the time and effort and energy that the families give and the children give and the staff will be given to support is presenting itself as, as helping to find the right connection.
So it's a good indicator that not only are the students prepared for college, but they're also, they're prepared for college, they're being guided to the right college and they're succeeding when they get there.
Right.
If they're going back for the second year also.
Yes, yeah.
Can I just ask one more question about the, the Regents conversation before? So if you're saying that the eighth grade scores, even though they're taking the same test, are not counting, if we're doing away with the ability to have an accelerated math track, that's going to obviously help our scores in some aspects. But is it also maybe going to remove some possibilities for our kids to have access? And I know this is a bigger conversation.
Oh, no, it's great because it's really, it's actually going on right now and it really is still a family choice with the children. And so depending upon what numbers of children make the choice to go ahead and say, look, I do want to do algebra now, then we'll meet those needs. If it, if it stays the same, then we'll do that. If it gets a little smaller, then we'll do that. But now at the high school, they, they can say, oh, look, it's okay, you can do that in eighth grade and still get to calculus level. We couldn't say that before because we didn't have the structure built up that way. So that is a big difference, parents can really truly have a choice and say, do I want it in eighth grade or I'm just going to wait? Do it in ninth grade and I can still get to that pathway of, of A P Calculus, calculus at the high school. So, yeah.
So is the, there's a lot that was said just now, right? To digest for the community, but it means it's safe to say that the takeaway on this is there's more to come on it, right? As far as the, the summer or fall goals and how we're going to report on that and present it, you know, not just, you know, at face value that, hey, look, yeah, the U S World News Report is saying X, we think we're better than it. You know, trust us, but there's, there's more illustration and, and presentations that we're going to continue to do over time to, to show that, you know, hey, we're, we're, we're doing as a school district is above and beyond what they're actually tracking and comparing. And, and again, illustrating that to the community a little bit more.
I think you said it much more succinctly than I did, thank you very much.
I don't know, you, you said it, it was a long winded one, so I just want to come back, there's more to come on it. You know, just don't accept this because we've been, you know, just saying, hey, we're better than that, ignore that stuff back here.
You said it much better and again, thinking about how we come out Monday, or Monday, in the fall with our typical, you know, start of the school year. And then how do we follow up on that? So what's that mid-year check and let's talk, what, not every element, because we don't get every element, but what are the, some of the key elements we get? We can pop those up, pretty straight word and, and basically in the winter. And then we can say, okay, here's in the summer. So it won't be as exhaustive as in the fall, but we'll, we'll have key indicators that we look, that really frankly drive the support systems across the district. So if a student is struggling, it's like, okay, we got it, we know. Here's some of the students who are getting multi, different supports. They may be getting interventions in the classroom and/or interventions out of the classroom. But that information is there, it's really available and we can see incremental growth along the way. So that's what I hope we can kind of be the initial kind of approach of that and saying, take those elements out of the summary report that's in the fall and then go ahead and, and show that in the mid-winter and the end of the year. And again, and this time next year, we'll be hopefully inviting community to come and visit our initial kind of pilot of those projects, community-based projects from I B out of this campus. And I think that will shift my thinking, I think everybody else is thinking, I know some of you had a chance to go see the science Olympia, uh, science, science Olympias, but our science research projects, think about that. But reality is, is that every single student leaving this campus will need to be do that in the future. And so you're talking about the level of investment and, and engagement in that work to be able to be then demonstrated and celebrated in the community. That's going to really shift our, all of our thinking about what does it truly mean to demonstrate a student has learned and is ready to, for the next step to go to high school. So, so thank you so much for the extended time, I appreciate it.
No problem for conversation.
Could I add one more, just, I, this is my personal opinion, but I think relevant to your discussions right now here. I think one piece we would love to have, maybe a big job to get at is to have, you mentioned nineteen twenty, but I would like to see eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, the student and parents feedback on, you know, these issues we talked about. If we could sort of survey the students, survey the parents of this four years coming back, understand exactly how we interpret the, you know, the U S News, whatever else data we get or other input. But what more relevant is to our own school district very locally, you know, we, we are doing. And perhaps that information is more valuable for us to project into the future, you know, to, to get success.
And Ife, and, and my understanding is I think certainly that as a school district, we want to kind of get back online where we were pre-COVID when we were examining some different assessment tools out of learning.
Four years data from student, from parents, you know, on, on the issues we just talked about, we will learn a lot.
Are you talking about gra, as they've, who've graduated already?
Oh, yeah, 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 the graduate. I mean, that's what, you know, what the learning office are, the counseling office has data to, to communicate. Maybe just a simple, you know, key question survey and get it back to, to, you know, build this data for us to interpret.
And Phil could speak to this as well too, and we can talk more about, again, this as we move forward, but and the reality is, is that that does kind of ask senior kind of exit, you know, information from those kids. And yet, how can we make sure that we can, you know, do, I have focus groups that I meet with administrators at the high school, approximately about half of the student population at the end of the year in senior groups and things. So those focus groups have gone on since I've been here. And so the reality is mixing, you know, the, the numbers and the stats and the stories kind of come together to create kind of, frankly, some of the stuff we're at today, kids would speak to me frankly and, look, I, I want to be in a really rigorous course. I really want good experiences. I'm choosing not to maybe be in an honors class, that doesn't mean I don't want that level of engagement. So really, as we talked about the embedded honors piece, certainly the student voice was directly involved in that work and saying, I want to be there. I may not choose to get in honors, but now that they can choose, they don't have to do that until the end of the, end of the course. So that's a piece, if you're right, getting the feedback from the kids and the feedback from the community and feedback from the parents. Nothing but good things usually comes about it, so, so thank you.
Another big takeaway I have from that is that fact that it's not that you're not collecting the data, you're not monitoring, you're not, that's all happening. You've showed us, you know, given us examples of all the, the intense ways in which student project, progress is being tracked and success is being measured. It's now a matter of, you know, how do we put, as a board, what information do we need as those big buckets?
Yes.
And that, that information that gets shared.
Again, as the administrative team, we want to make sure the board has the information that they can to help ask critical questions of myself and the team, as well as celebrate the, the support that the board has given for programs such as some of the ones we heard this evening, or the ones that will materialize as we come forward in the next best steps. So we want to make sure the board has an informed decision-making experience so that, and say, yes, I feel confident that is, that you've either decided not to do that project because you don't have evidence that shows that that is a good project to continue with, or you go ahead and continue to move forward that project because it is demonstrating some pieces. Like we talk world languages, that's coming online in the next couple of years at the elementary level. What evidence, what information do we want to kind of monitor and track so we can say, oh, let's keep that thing going, let's keep that thing moving because these are the targets we hit. Here's the feedback back from families and from kids and things like, ooh, looks like we hit our identified target in world language expansion into S A S, so, yeah.
I think it's important for the board, Ray, but I think it's more important for the community as well.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, for, yes, it would be lovely for us to see, but to translate these senior surveys that Megan was talking about in a way that's digestible to the wider community, what a powerful demonstration of the work that's happening. I mean, it's great for us, we should have it. I think we serve the community and I want to just remember that we are here in service of the community.
I'm going to say it again, thank you very much.
You're welcome, okay, done now? All right. Be it resolved that this regular meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained.